Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vento, roll call please.
Mr. Corolla.
Here.
Mr. Daldel.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. McGough.
Here.
Mr. St. Ledger.
President.
Mrs. Stepnick.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Zuko.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Board met an executive session on July 7th and this evening, July 21st, 2015, to discuss matters of personnel, student confidentiality, and collective bargaining.
Mr. Paul, there's two other items I forgot to mention. We also discussed a potential tax assessment appeal and a personal injury claim.
Okay, thank you.
Approval of minutes, recommend approval of the following meeting minutes, June 23rd, regular board meeting, July 6th, special voting meeting, and the July 7th committee of the whole.
Like to make that motion?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. We have student features tonight, Mr. McGough?
Couple of student features and we always like to recognize our scholar athletes. And our first program, very exciting details, I'd like Coach Russo to call him now, if you'd give him a nice round of applause. Coach, congratulations on a good year and I wonder if you could just tell the folks about this year's program and some of the student scholar athletes that we're recognizing this evening.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vincent Russo. I'm a 7th grade science teacher at O'Blockt Junior High School and also the assistant volleyball coach for the boys at the high school. We had a very, very exciting year with our volleyball program this year. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a background, but none of that really wouldn't possible if it wasn't for Colonel Rick Peterson. He was our head coach and he's also the junior ROTC detachment commander. And also Mike Larko, if anybody's familiar with Mr. Larko, he was a math teacher here at Plum High School for a number of years and I like to call him Coach Emeritus for the number of years that he had put in here as the head volleyball coach and without those two gentlemen, none of that would have been possible for the year that we had had. Our volleyball team has an overall record of 12 and 3. We were, we had a sectional record of 11 and 1, which made us the section champions for the first time in 10 years, which just by that self was an amazing accomplishment, especially in the section that we're in where we find teams such as Norwin, Penn Trafford, which are very, very stout competition for us every year. The main reason why our team was so successful this year is because of the dedication of our players. Most of our starters were seniors and they had been together for four years and they had seen a lot of adversity when it came to coaching, coming back and forth, but this year they really wanted to make a stand and one of the things that the coach had said during most of the year is what do you want your legacy to be? And they really took that to heart and they would look up at the banners that are, if anybody's familiar with, I'm sure that most people are familiar with, the banners that are adorned our gymnasium upstairs along the walls, that several different volleyball section champions up there, but there hadn't been anyone for us for a number of years and so they really wanted to make sure that they had their number up there, that they had 2015 up there for them. If you want to take a look at your agenda, some of the players that really had adorned themselves with individual honors, as you can see on there, Nathan Conkle was first team all WPIAL and also first team all section for section 3. Kane and Yaka also first team all section and also first team WPIAL. Tyler Arnold, second team all WPIAL, first team all section. Jack Murray, first team all section. Matthew Innes, second team all section. Zachary Crowe, honorable mention, all section, section 3, and also Dominic Grasso, honorable mention. All these student athletes, wonderful kids, did an extremely nice job, they never gave up on each other and that was one thing that we kind of made for a very, very interesting year and exciting year for us. When we got into playoffs, we were able to have a home playoff match against North Allegheny, who if anybody's familiar with volleyball, for boys volleyball, that they are one of the best teams in the state every year and we were able to come up with a win against them, which put us into other league playoffs, which we did falter to Fox Chapel, who was number one in the state all year. But we took them to the end and we fought bitterly all the way until the end and it was kind of a devastating loss for us, but it would made us for it to be a better and stronger team for the future. Other than that, if anybody, I really want to thank, you know, thank the community for being supportive of us, the parents also for supporting us, they came to every game very much, very loud, and really enjoyed this year. Thank you very much.
It's my privilege now for another recognition to introduce a Hall of Fame coach, the Running Mustangs, the coach of the Running Mustangs, Coach Iontta, Coach Joe Iontta, if you'd give him a nice round of applause.
Good evening, my name is Joe Iontta, I've been around Plum a few years, was, had the fortunate ability to be able to teach here for about 38 years and I want to thank the Board for enabling me to express a few thoughts tonight. And the biggest thought is I want to emphasize how special Plum was to me and still is. And I wanted to kind of like relate a few ideas on why that's so, and I had two main ones, but now I have a, now I have a third one. I want to congratulate Coach Russo and the Mustangs for winning a section championship. You know, from a coach's perspective, it's really, really, really special to have a section championship and I think we need to give them another applause. Now, now moving on, and again, I'd really like to appreciate, I'd like to show my appreciation for the Board on how special this district has been, especially with the Stampede. Our Stampede, which is a 5K race that gives proceeds to Hillman Center, the Board, the district, the teachers, everybody has been so supportive of that. I didn't make any research, but I don't believe that there's too many districts around where the superintendent passes water out to runners. The AD is in charge of showing the runners how to go. The Board, and we really appreciate this, has enabled us to have a shuttle for all the runners that we have, we kind of run out of space sometimes for parking and they've enabled us to shuttle some of the runners back there. Some of the Board members have run in it, I know some of the Board members have also been part of committees to help out race day. Teachers have just done an amazing, amazing job with the dress down days, maybe around $1,500 a year to the Stampede for the dress down days. They also work at the Stampede all together. It's just been truly, truly amazing how special this district has been with regards to helping out the Stampede and in the seven years, eight years that we've had the Stampede, we've given over $180,000 to Hillman Cancer Center and hopefully this year, you know, hopefully this year we're going to go to about $215,000 and, you know, my prayers are that eventually they're going to have cure. Most of this goes towards leukemia research and hopefully, you know, in a few years and they're right on the brink of having, doing some amazing things that your children will not have to concern themselves about leukemia in the future. And we really again thank the Board for all that because I know without your support this would not have happened. Second one, and this is another, a big one with regards to our cross-country program. We have a coach in the cross-country program, he was a head coach for over 40 years at the high school level and it wasn't in Plum. And after he's finished that, he decided that he was going to be a volunteer assistant coach at Plum. He's done that now for 13 years and truly, from a coach's perspective, after being head coach, you don't volunteer to coach in a district that's not truly, truly special. And Coach Max is, again, probably has over 50 years of coaching in the last 13 and hopefully he thinks, I know he thinks, the most special district around here. So on behalf of the Running Mustangs, the Running Mustangs alumni and their parents, we'd like to again thank the Board for enabling us to be able to be in this special, special place with our cross-country program. And now we'd like to have Coach Max come up here and receive a little plaque from the Running Mustangs. And what the plaque says is, it says Plum, Plum Cross Country and Running Mustangs Appreciation Award for 13 years of volunteer coaching, Russ Maxwell, obviously known as Coach Max. Again, thank, thank you so much for truly having a special, special district that we can be a part of, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGough, appreciate that. Congratulations. Go to citizens comments portion, we're not going to separate agenda or non-agenda items, so are there any citizens comments for tonight's meeting?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I'm here to speak about closing of schools. I am one who has lived through it. Everyone expects me to go against the closing, but I'm telling you, from one who has gone through it, it's a good thing. When I started in Plum Borough School District, there was a school called Unity School where the bank, S&amp;T Bank in Unity as it now stands. It closed. My sister attended that school, the students were moved to Harding School. In Harding School, I was in 6th grade. It had 47 students in it, it was split into three. Those three groups went to Seward School, Logan's Ferry School, and Renton School. The very next year, Logan's Ferry School was closed, affecting me again because there was no more 8th grade there. 8th grade was then moved to what was called Plum Senior High School, School. The very next year after that, Seward School closed, which meant more school students at the school up there and the classes got crowded again. The year after that, that Harding School closed. So I have lived through it, so I don't think closing schools is a bad thing. The reason is, you meet people from different parts of the borough, different subjects, different matter. As for the kids in the school there, we have declining population of school students, but not a population. Most of the population that lives in Plum Borough now are on fixed income, me included. A raise in taxes would not be good. If it raises too much, it means I have to move. Thank you very much for listening.
Sir, can I have your name and address, please?
Pardon me?
Your name and street address?
My name is Gregory Statler, I live in Frankston, Akers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Reed Urban, I live at 413 Mower Drive. And I'm here to talk about the taxes and the closing of the school. I'm retired and I'm on a fixed income, but when I moved here 45 years ago, there were people on fixed incomes and retired and they paid their dues going forward for my kids to get an education here. Now it's my turn to continue paying for the next generation and paying a tax increase if it's necessary to keep that school open. Thank you.
Jennifer Wells, 418 Regency Drive. I'm a very passionate parent, but like President Sal stated in the latest copy of the Plum Advancement Leader, decisions should be made off facts, not emotions, to which I wholeheartedly agree. So let's review some facts. President Sal also outlined his interpretation of the 2012 demographic study that was done. His talking points were that birth rates are flat, that we have more graduates than kindergarten students being enrolled, and that new housing has not recovered from the financial bubble. Out of the four scenarios in that demographic study, three predict a positive increase for elementary enrollment from 2012 to 2022. The only one that doesn't is scenario two on pages 38 and 39 of the study and is listed as being the least likely prediction for Plum Borough School District as there is certainly no basis for assuming a decrease in births. I assume that President Sal is looking at scenario one whenever he says that the birth rates are flat, which predicts a 2% increase from 2012 to 2017, an overall increase of 1%. Now I understand, 1% is not huge, but as also pointed out in his letter, the current capacity of the New Holiday Park, the New Pivot and Center is 2,060 students. In 2014 and 2015, Plum School had 200 or 2,003 elementary students. Even without an increase, that puts Plum at 97.23% capacity if we were to close Regency. Scenario three, which the study states as the second most likely predicts a 3% increase in the years 2012 to 2017 with an overall increase of 7% in elementary schools. 3% of 2,000 is 60 students, putting us at 100% capacity by 2017, which could be the potential date of opening the doors of a brand-new Regency. Scenario four predicts 2,108 students by 2022, so you can see where I'm going with these increased numbers. As far as new housing not recovering, yes. From 2008 to 2011, housing permits were low, they were averaging 43.3 permits out of those three years. No arguing that fact, Sal. But another interesting fact, according to the United States Census Bureau's website from 2012 to 2014, there were a total of 148 new housing permits. It's an average of 49.3 permits in two years. It's an increase of 13.85%. Finally, the demographic study lists nine housing developments, but only counts eight due to the inactivity of one of them. There are currently two new housing plans in process of approval with Plum Council. That would make eight up to 10. One would be directly in Regency Park's districted school zones. As for the one inactive development, if you've driven New Texas Road recently and passed the corner of Briarwood Lane, you would see a new house that is almost finished being built. Thank you for your time.
Harry Schlegel, 125 Winchester Drive. Emotion and passion is important and it can sway you. But when it comes to business decisions and financial decisions, we can't look at just emotion. I keep hearing about how great Regency is and the nurturing environment that it has there. Well, brick and mortar doesn't make a nurturing environment. It's the people in the building. And if it's an issue of a nurturing environment and it's because of the teachers, you don't need to be, build a new school, you've got a personnel issue that you need to address. I did some studies, or research I should say. You know, not only the initial cost, the recurring cost of keeping that school open, or any school open. We've got excess capacity now, or we will soon have excess capacity in a couple more years. Plum, in eight years, went from graduating 4,375 students to graduating 3,000, or total, not graduating, but a total student population of 4,357. In this past school year, 3,863. Now that's a loss of 494 students over eight years. That's a trend and it will continue. Tax bills are out. I've been taking an informal poll. The people from Regency would like to have the school there and they have their reasons for it, but if it's a nurturing reason, then move the teachers who do the nurturing to whatever schools the kids are going to go to. We're going to pay on a bond issue. The debt service is going to increase significantly, I'm sure, and that's going to go on for 20, 25 years? Your kids only go to school there for six and the community's going to pay for 20. We have excess capacity, or we have adequate capacity. Regency Park, the difference in eight years is 64 students. Not that many, but you've been doing redistricting in that timeframe to keep it loaded up. Redistricting is controversial. People don't want to go from one side of the borough to the other side of the borough, but it takes planning and it takes some effort and you can come up with a workable solution. It's happened in the past. In an informal poll I've been taking with people paying their taxes, and you know, you guys don't face it, I do. How about take one day, half a day, down to my office, the last week of the discount period, please?
Let me know, I'll schedule it, I'd love to come.
Pardon me?
I'd love to come.
Please, please, I've got coffee and soda. But I want you to talk to the people and I want you to hear their comments. You know, they're writing these checks and they're not happy because they're writing that check. Taxing has never solved the problem, it's exacerbated it. I mean, you can tax, we don't have a revenue, we have a spending problem, we need to control that spending. And when you look at the recurring cost of staff and just utilities for another building, then in a few years, what are you going to do with the excess capacity? That's a special purpose, specifically built building. What do you do with it? Do you keep it open and keep spending money when you could solidate because you've got capacity in the other buildings? It doesn't make much sense. And the other thing is, if, hate to bring it up, but when I look around, there's a lot of feather bedding that's happening here in Plum, in the school districts and in the borough. And we can't tolerate that in this day and age, we can't afford it. If you really, you want to pass the buck and put the decision off, put it on a referendum. Does it cost you anything? And let the entire community decide. I'm tired hearing too, it's about the kids. That's, that's a catch-all, it's about the kids. We're all concerned with kids' education, but it's about the kids, isn't hunting anymore. That dog doesn't hunt, because it's got to be about the families, about the seniors, about the people of Plum. You're supposed to represent every one of us, not just a small group, not just a group of employees, everyone in the borough. So put it on a ballot, let the people decide. There's your answer. They say yes, go for it. They say no, you stop. We would like to have more control over what money we spend. Our money is taken out of our paychecks, money's taken out of our wallets, and yes, we've got a large population of seniors here. They're here because they've been here for many, many years. They raise families here, they paid their dues. In today's day and age with the economy we have, they can't do it anymore. I hear it all the time. Again, Michelle, I would love to have you come down there to the office and, and, you know, just please, I'll give you a comfortable chair. As a matter of fact, I'm even having you do some data entry if you don't mind. But you need to put it on the ballot and let the people decide. If they decide to go for the school, we build a school, but if the community decides against it, you don't build it.
Thanks.
My time is up, thank you very much.
Just as a reminder, I know there are a lot of folks that want to speak tonight and this is no reflection on the previous speakers, but we do need to limit you to five minutes today, so I appreciate your conciseness.
Mike Fisher, 424 Allegheny Avenue. I just want to start by kind of basically dispelling the misconception that your taxes are going to go up for anything that has to do with Regency. It won't, taxes are going to go up either way. That's a fact. Whether they build on to Center and do that whilst kids are in that school, whether they build a new Regency, or whether they house those kids in the, like a Depression era shanty town in the rubble of their old school, taxes are going to go up. There's no way around that. It's a fact, it's going to happen. Most of the Board advocated it at some point this year, so it's going to happen. So we can get, we can get past that, your taxes are going to go up. So the other part is, it's not just about nurturing kids, it's about having workable class sizes and it's completely different than it was at any time in our, in our history. Now kids, it's, you know, 30 or 40 kids in a classroom, we have a lot of special needs kids. 30 or 40 kids, this isn't workable. It won't be workable anytime in the near future. If you think that the other schools don't have, they're not working at capacity, go talk to some of the teachers in Pivot and the other places, I have, I know, they're swamped. I mean, this, we're going to go around and around, they're going to, basically kind of, the opposition to building Regency is going to pit, pit this as a situation of, it's about taxes. It's not about taxes, they're going to borrow money either way. Either way, money's going to be borrowed, your taxes are going to go up. The only thing that's going to happen is our kids are going to suffer. They're going to be bused clear across the borough at, to a school that's going to cost roughly about half a million dollars more to keep open than the school they're currently at, or they were at. So money's going to go up because of where they're going and that's going to happen right now indefinitely. So this isn't, this isn't about tax increases because of Regency. When you have $120 million and $110 million in debt, you're going to raise taxes at some point, it's inevitable. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board and citizens of Plum. I'm Angela Temania, 540 Anderson Avenue. I was here two weeks ago and I talked to you as a teacher, as a graduate of this school. I am now going to talk to you as somebody who has graduated and came out and had hardship. I will admit to the public that yes, I live at home. I have had some hardships, I have come home and that's where I am. Now, with Regency being predominantly elderly people that are living there, my grandmother is one of them, they are leaving, they are consolidating, they're going from their bigger homes to little homes or apartments. That makes it wonderful for first-time homeowners to come in there and take those houses that we cannot go and build our own houses in these new towns, these new burrows, different places. We don't want to. An example, my friends who have been teaching at Wilkinsburg and another one that just graduated from nursing school have bought a home in Regency Park. They plan on having a family, their main one selling point, low cost of their home, and two, the school was right across the street from them. It is something that we, as a younger generation, can use. We cannot all afford to build our homes from scratch to go into a different to go into a different plan that would put us at Pivot, or Center, or Holiday Park. And, just as that note, remember you're redistricting way back in 96. Bring everybody back home to Regency, Edge Meet, anywhere on Unity Center, we all belong there. The bank, anybody back there, they belong there. This little area is perfect to bring in new people, younger people, families that don't have a fixed income, no offense, not going there, but can bring new life into this home. And where do I want to live? I want to live here, I want to come back home, and I want to build my family here. You don't have the room. And like I said, two weeks ago, I talked as a teacher, I'm talking as a potential parent, potential citizen of Plum on my own, and that's where you're going to find them. Not in Holiday Park, not over at Pivot. Those new housing complexes are too expensive for us to be going in as first-time homeowners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Board. My name is Wendy McCabe, this is my son Caleb. I wanted to bring him up, he's going to kill me for that, but I wanted everyone to remember that these children are what we're doing here and what we're here for. Caleb is going into fifth grade at Regency or wherever he's going to be. So by the time that this school district, or this school issue is completed, he will have moved on to the senior, or junior high school. But it is still so important to me that we be here to represent how important, and to speak on behalf of the other parents who also want this to stay open. I was born and raised in Regency Park, my parents are still in there. When I was a boomeranger, I left Pittsburgh, and when I returned, I had a one-year-old, and I knew there was no place I wanted to look for a home outside of Regency Park. I wanted to be back in Plum for the school district, and I wanted that experience that I had to be able to be passed on to my son. So I came back to Regency Park, and I do have many neighbors around me that were neighbors of mine that long ago. And those neighbors are beginning to sell their homes. My parents have discussed selling their home, and people like me, a young family, a young mother, are the ones moving in. Now, we've talked a lot about emotion, and we can't make this decision on emotion. Every side, whichever you believe in, we all agree on that. This needs to be a smart economic business decision, what's best for the borough, and that includes what's best for retirees and for the children, and it needs to be a balance. And that balance needs to be achieved because we have not raised taxes in almost nine years. And I could be wrong on that, it could be seven, I've heard two numbers out there. But it is past time to do what is responsibly right, and is not necessarily the easy decision, but is the right decision. And like the gentleman that spoke to before me, raising taxes is not at all equal to being, or being caused by Regency Park. We have built a new Pivot, we have built a new Adelaide Stevenson, we have purchased a new bus garage. If we want to equate the taxes to be raised to Regency Park, we have to equate it to all of those other significant purchases that this Board and this district have made. I need that to be perfectly clear, and I hope that people out there can hear that and listen. We can't say, oh, Regency, you're the last to go because you're the little guy, so now we're going to have to blame you for the taxes. That is not at all the way. Mr. Slagel, I don't know where you went to. I, I can understand, and respect your informal polling, because you certainly have the pulse of the residents of Plum. But sir, I would like to challenge you and just ask the question, the number of people that come in, are they retirees? And how many family members, people like myself, in their 30s, well, I'm not in my 30s, 30s or 40s, can come in and say, I know, I personally, every time I have a tax issue, I send my dad, and I'm a spoiled little rotten girl, but I send my dad in. So I'm assuming that there's a lot of senior citizens that have the free time during the day to come in, because I don't, I wish I did, but I don't. And Mr. Slagel was right, brick and mortar doesn't make a passionate nurturing school. It is our teachers that have done that, but it is also that sense of community. And that is one of the biggest things about Regency Park and about most of our schools in Plum, is they are based in a community. The last couple of things that I'd like to say, and then I'll be done, is as a Regency Park resident, I am extremely concerned about what will happen to my property value if this building is torn down and not resold, or not rebuilt. So that is something that the residents of Regency definitely need you as a Board to factor in. Sorry, I was making notes. Lastly, we did not put Regions, or Pivot up to a referendum, we did not put the bus garage up to a referendum, we did not put Adelaide Stevenson up to a referendum. It is ridiculous to recommend that it go to a referendum. The other buildings did not. We need to stand on the Board, majority of you have voted time and time again to have this school rebuilt, whether it went from being renovated to rebuilt, you have made these decisions, and we have elected you as our officials to represent us. So I ask you to stand behind the decisions that you have already made, close and tear down Regency, and build our students a new school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Cooley, 419 Cathy Lynn Drive. I have two students that go to Regency, and like you said, the school is not just the building itself, but it is the people in the building. I'm coming from a teacher's standpoint, as a teacher for the Pittsburgh public, yeah, there are class sizes in Pittsburgh public that are 36 kids a class. To think that if we continue to consolidate and have smaller classes here is not going to happen. In the, my understanding and what was stated before in the teacher's contract, after 25 kids, there's no aid. When is an aid given to teachers, once we hit 26, 28, 29 kids? I want to know. I have a kid who has emotional support. Being in a smaller class with 25 kids, being in a smaller school is much better for my kid and for many kids that have some emotional support. And for us to say that, oh, there's not that many kids out there, I'm willing to get up here and say, there's more than that. I teach, I know, I have a kid that lives at home that has severe emotional issues. He needs to be in a small school setting where the teachers that are there understand him, the parents that I have communicated with and have a relationship with understand my child, and having that community sense. My kid can go anywhere in Regency, and the parents all have my number. They know that. You guys get rid of our school, where does that leave my kid but to go to a school with 32, 34 kids in a class? And that's not acceptable to me. I, like Wendy, moved back into Regency, I went to Regency Park, graduated Plum, came back because of the school and because of the community, and that school being in the community. So I am asking you to go back to what you guys decided and vote for Regency to be rebuilt, redesigned, however it is done, but also taxes are going to go up regardless if it's Regency or no Regency. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cooley.
Hello, School Board, Dr. Glasspool, Mr. Price, Ms. Vanto. I attended the July 6 meeting, I was away on business on the 7th. From what I heard, many of you were in agreement with keeping a new Regency Park Elementary. It's very forward-looking and great for our community. For those that aren't of that mindset, let me be clear, I am completely in favor of you doing what you already approved, which is building a new Regency Park Elementary. If you need to raise taxes to better our community and pay for your past expenditures, I will happily accept a tax increase. There is so much wrong with closing Regency Park Elementary. It's breaking up a successful neighborhood school full of wonderful teachers and high-achieving children. It's doing an injustice to these current and future students. This isn't just six years in a school, this is our community, this is our future. This isn't a short-term thing. There would be overcrowding in the other elementary schools, I believe Ms. Wells spoke on that. It would leave no room for growth in our district, 97% full, if I read it correctly. Adding to that, there'd be new busing costs to drive the Regency students past their old school, all the way out to Holiday Park at taxpayers' expense, I'm not sure how that's being paid for at this point. It would adversely impacting the property values, statistically up to a 9% drop. Adversely impacting the desirableness of the homes in the neighborhood. Adversely impacting the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood, and lowering tax revenues to the school district and to the borough due to the lower property values. The main reason the Board has presented as justification to close Regency are taxes and a demographic study. I want to start with the latter one. In my opinion, the Board wasted 20,000 of taxpayer dollars on a flawed demographic study to try and justify the closing or consolidation of schools. Simply put, the information in this study is inaccurate. Without wasting any taxpayer money, I, like Mr. Slagel, I did some research on my own. According to a PA legislature study, between 2000 and 2000, 2010 and 2040, suburban youth will increase 5%. In that same period, women of childbearing age will increase 9%, and suburban births will increase by 6%. Many of our neighbors have lived here since the plant opened. I have great neighbors. At some point, they may plan to downsize, or better yet, spend their final days here at Regency Park. Either way, new, probably young families will be moving in and starting the Regency Park life. Just like enrollment in schools, there is an ebb and flow to the community and to the growth in the communities. In addition, there were 214 homes built within the last few years. Many have sold, some are still available, and some, one is at least in phase two of construction. New homes are also in the planning stage where Walmart was going to be across Saltberg, and many of those homes will be in Plum and in the Regency Park District of Plum. And Regency Park attendance, from the numbers provided to me from the actual school district, have increased over the last two years. Now regarding the other issue, taxes, I reiterate what I stated in my last letter. The stigma of a tax increase is negative, Board members vote against them for political reasons. The truth that that, the truth is that the job of the Board, not the first job, which should be to operate under a student-first culture, is to raise taxes periodically. Not raising taxes for the sake of not raising taxes shortchanges our community. It will ultimately cut programs, close schools, and weaken the value of our homes and community. The Board already borrowed $10 million. After buying and remodeling the bus garage and paying bills at Holiday Park, there is still, I believe, around 6.5 million left of the 11-plus million needed to complete Regency. Mr. Pascal, the Bond Counsel for the District, stated that the District is permitted to borrow another $20 million, although only 4.5 million is needed to meet the goals for Regency Park. And that's from the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting on October 24th, 2014. With a 1 mil increase, Plum would actually generate net income after the first year. This would cover the two years' busing cost to Regency students to Holiday Park. I implore you to do what is right for the current and future students of Plum's Regency Park neighborhood. Raise taxes and borrow the remaining funds as planned, and I believe that was planned. You knew you had enough to get started, there's always additional cost, and you were going to have to borrow a little bit on the back end to finish things up. See what you voted to completion, move forward with the Act 34 hearing, demolish the old building, immediately begin construction on the new Regency Park Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
My name is Bill Ferguson, I live at 55 Wayside Lane. I would like to divide my remarks tonight into two sections. Section one. One of the things I learned a long time ago is that a person, or a group of people, seldom make a bad decision from among well-defined set of options or possibilities. You can evaluate them, decide what the strong points and the weak points are that apply to each possibility, and choose the best option. The place people go wrong is that they have, they fail to have enough good things on the list. They make a choice from among bad options. The worst possible place you can get is when you get to the place you only have one choice. You're stuck with it. Now I hope that the School Board has not got themselves into that position with respect to a new Regency school. I hope some other doors are still open. And I'm going to ask that the School Board tell us what the options are. Suppose we did not build a new Regency school. What would happen? Where would the children go? Now for section two. As I have listened both tonight and on other occasions to the supporters of the Regency School project, it seems to me that much of their argument is for a special, preferred position in the Plum Borough School District. They want a smaller, more intimate, more nurturing school for Regency Park than for other parts of the borough. They want to have a special school without, within walking distance, so the children do not have to ride on the bus. Is that fair to the remainder of the community? Does Regency Park deserve, does that neighborhood deserve a better school system than the rest of us? I visited the old Pivot building when it was an elementary school. We did need a replacement for that relic. I have visited Regency School, and it is no way an equal disaster to the old Pivot. To my observation, admittedly not an expert, Regency and Center look very much alike. Not new, but entirely safe and adequate. So how long until we start the new Center School after we complete the new Regency? Or does the School Board have the guts, the strength, and the wisdom to make a decision based on the best result for the whole borough rather than for the special interest of a neighborhood pressure group? Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Drake, 1080 Vulcan Drive. Talked a lot about facts and figures here, and I sat on the Board for four years. And I spent a lot of time, for two years before I sat on the Board, attending every committee meeting. I don't see anybody in this auditorium that spent as much time attending committee meetings for six solid years as I did. I've studied both the old demographic studies as well as the new one, and I beg to differ with the large majority of the audience, but that was not a waste of $20,000. The demographic study was done by an expert, an expert at Carnegie Mellon University, who was dead-on, dead-on, on the last two demographics. It was scary how accurate he was in projecting the change in the student population on the last two demographic studies. So I put a lot of credibility in this current demographic study that says the options are, you're going to need somewheres between 11 to 12 rounds, depending on which scenario you look at. It does not show as significant growth as some people would like to. In fact, if you look at the last 15 years, the student population has decreased from just about 4,400 students to just under 4,000 students. That's almost a 10% decrease, and that's well within what the demographic study said we would have. The cost to tear down and build a new Regency is estimated to be in 11 to 12 million dollar range, at least the last that I heard. You have to go out and borrow this money. The bond ratings that you got for the last borrowing, you're not going to get as good a bond rating as you got the last time. You depleted the funds, you have no reserve balance, and that's one of the things that the bond raters will look at, how much do you have in reserves? You don't have anything anymore, you're pretty much down to nil. Barely have enough to cover you, if you don't get any state money this year because of the budget, you probably have enough money to carry you with the cash you have until you start to collect your taxes, but you don't have a cushion. You also seem to abandon the five-year strategic plan. You borrowed, this Board borrowed money to work on the infrastructure. You can't reprogram that money. That money was borrowed for a specific list of projects that were provided to the bondholders when it was borrowed. You have to stick to that list. You haven't done anything with that list. I haven't seen any work being done on any of those projects on that list. Okay? You will need new taxes for Regency, this is about taxes. The new Pivot, the new Holiday Park, those were all funded, you didn't have to raise taxes for those. A lot of that was done through refinancing of bond issues, and a lot of it was recovered by closing down Holiday Park. You get somewheres between $6,000 to $900,000 a year in savings, depending on whose numbers you look at, which is enough to cover the principal and interest payments for the money that was borrowed to build the new Pivik. So there wasn't the tax increase needed for it, and there won't be a tax increase needed for it again. Your tax increase is going to be needed for your pension payments, teacher's salary increases, and if you build a new Pivik. That's where your primary tax rates are going to go to. If you continue to build a new Pivik, you're going to get these higher taxes. So let's look at another option, an even better option. It would require some board members to think outside the box, but I'm going to challenge you. Tear down the old Center, build another Pivik Holiday Park four-round school. It's a mature design, it's been built twice, you know exactly what the costs are, you know exactly what the schedule is. You will have 12 rounds. It'll be more than enough if you suddenly get a surge of new children coming into the district to give you time. It will also only cost you about an extra $3 or $4 million. So you built the last, the new Holiday Park for, I think, just under $16 million. So, for an extra $3 or $4 million, you get twice the building. That's a deal. Okay? The other thing to look at is if you're going to build a new elementary school that's only two rounds, as best I can tell in my research, nobody in Pennsylvania has built a two-round school in the last 20 years. So that design is going to be designed from scratch. And as a certified project manager, I can tell you, first-of-a-kind design buildings are a project manager's worst nightmare. They typically carry a risk of at least a 20% overrun for all of the first-of-a-kind issues you'll find. Okay? And you'll have a one-of-a-kind building, which makes no sense. So you can go ahead with a new Regency, keeping Center, borrowing more money, and you're going to send us down the path of Penn Hills. You're going to become financially insolvent in the next five to 10 years because you can't keep raising taxes to beyond what the taxpayers can afford to pay. So you're limited. You're limited by state laws to how much you have, but you're also limited by what the taxpayers can really afford. In addition, I don't believe the state is approving any new constructions for reimbursement. They had a moratorium, and I haven't seen that that moratorium was lifted. So if it hasn't been lifted, they're going to foot 100% of the bill for this building because the state's not going to give you any more money. The school board needs to do what's best for all of Plum, not one small section of the community, but the entire community. And they also have to look at the long term, and I'm not talking about the next two, three, four years. I'm talking the next 10, 15, 20 years. You need to look at the long-term financial impact on the community and make sure you're not sending us down a financial disaster path.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Thanks.
Hello. I'm Christine Kavleski, 542 Deborah Jane Drive. I am new to this because my children are young. I graduated from Plum Senior High School in 96. When it came time to look for a house, I urged my husband, who graduated from Kiski, to please move to Plum. We had an amazing school, I got a great education, and with time, he said, "Fine." And we bought our home, or got our home, I'm sorry, we did not build it, we bought our home, in Regency Park. I am just up here to say that I just want my children to get the best possible education, just like I did. And I want Regency to be built, I want my kids to go to the neighborhood school, and I do not want my children to be in class sizes that are far too large for them to learn. My daughter has special needs, that she does well in a smaller class size. So I was very happy when I learned that that's how Regency was with the smaller class sizes because when I moved in, I went to Holiday Park. When I was young, I went to Holiday Park. My children go to Regency. So I just want to say to the board that please keep our school open. It benefits all of us, and like I said, I just want my kids to get a good education. Thank you.
Kiara Fisher, 424 Allegheny Avenue. I just want to say that I think like it's losing focus. We never asked for a new school. I want to make that quite clear to all you people who do not have the correct research. We did not ask for a new school. You decided to, I guess, remodel or upcode it, and it didn't pass the code, and it's making it sound like we only, we want a new school because Pivik had one and Holiday Park had one and Center was, I guess, redone recently. The point is, we are asking what is right. You closed the school! I mean, we're not saying we deserve to have a new school because everybody else has. No, you closed it. Where are you going to put all these people? These kids need a school. And I'll be happy to move and go to a different district if that means my kids get a better education and not have 30-plus children in a classroom.
Thank you.
My name is Kaye Chevall. I live at 720 Garlo Boulevard. Up until two years ago, I lived on Unity Center Road, directly across the street from the bar. My kids went to Regency then, and when we finally decided to purchase a house, we only looked in the neighborhoods that went to Regency Park. I wasn't uprooting my three kids to switch to Holiday Park, Center, Pivik. We specifically looked for a Regency Park neighborhood. I couldn't even afford to go look in Holiday Park. Again, as far as everyone is saying, I want my kids to be in a class size that is not 30-plus students. You are running the risk of a Penn Hills School District if you consolidate and close the school that we did not ask for. So, you could have left it open and fixed what was wrong with it, but instead you decided, "Oh, well, we should give them a new school," and now everyone's backpedaling. So just to be clear, you are hurting everyone by pushing it off and pushing it off and pushing it off. I'm now at the point where none of my kids are even going to see a new Regency because they're all going to be out of it by then, but it's extremely frustrating to listen to the crap being slung around about taxes this, taxes that. Everybody pays a tax increase, just like everyone pays their light bill going up and their gas bill going up and their insurance rates going up. You're going to have to pay for it eventually. Just get it over with because it's extremely frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Reagan, 712 Garlo Boulevard. I had to take notes as other people were talking because there's some points I want to touch on. For Mr. Ferguson, he was talking about, "We want to be able to walk or drive our kids to school." I, for one, my kid rides a bus every day since kindergarten. She's going into third grade, she will continue riding a bus, no matter if I'm in Holiday Park, Center, or Regency Park. It's a rite of passage for the kids, ride the bus. That's not what this is about at all. So it's not about that. But in that case, what he's not thinking about, who's going to pay for those buses if we're in a different school? Currently, we do drive our kids, we do walk our kids. There's no buses because, well, there's two or three. If we have to go to a different school, every single one of those kids at Regency Park needs to be bused. That is an added expense. So to refute what he's saying about busing, we don't want to bus our kids, it is saving the district money if we are in a school district where they can drive their kids or walk their kids to school. The gentleman that spoke after him came up with this wonderful idea to turn down, tear down Center and build a bigger, like another Holiday Park or Pivik. Where are you going to put two schools full of children? You already closed Regency. Now you want to, not you, but this gentleman who came up with this idea, tear down Center. That's two schools. Where the hell are they going? Then he was talking about borrowing money and using it for what it's borrowed for and all these capital expenditures. You borrowed $10 million for Regency. Account for that money. Because $10 million did not go to Regency. And then he said you were going to take us down the path of Penn Hills. As a Penn Hills graduate, I will tell you, a lot of my friends and family still go to Penn Hills School District. They have a mega elementary school, 12-run school per grade. They hate it. Absolutely hate it. Those kids are never going to have relationships with fellow children because they're not going to be in the same classes with the kids that they were in second grade with, the third grade, the fourth grade. 12 runs. Is that what Plum wants to have? I know as a taxpayer, I don't want to. Going on what Mr. Schlegel said, I wrote him my check yesterday. Okay? I wrote the check. Me, Regency Park, wrote a check for taxes. I would have happily wrote it for more, even though I may not be getting a new school. I just wrote a check for Holiday Park, Pivik, a bus garage that you spent our $10 million on, and mine's already in, turned in, paid. So for those people that are, he is taking an informal pull on exactly what Ms. McCabe said, how many of them are working people like me who just mail in my check because I work 8 to 5 and I can't go into the office to talk to him? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leanne Weiss. I live at 425 Vale Avenue, and I've been here, not just the last few board meetings as an active Regency Park parent, but I've been attending these meetings for quite some time. And I just want to draw your attention. My husband actually went through, spent quite a number of hours poring through the minutes from the last several years and compiled a timeline of this whole series of events and how this has transpired. And I want to again reiterate that the prompting for building this school has been, basically been talked about for over 10 years, and three members of the board have been on the board for 10 years, so you know what we're referring to. But this was not something that was brought by the parents, by the teachers of Regency Park. We didn't say, "Hey, there's bright and shiny new schools in other parts of Plum. We want to have the best school. We want to have a better facility." Because you're right. Whoever said earlier that a school is not about brick and mortar, you're right. It's not about a brick and mortar. It's about a community, and it's about the teachers, and it's about the families that belong to those schools. But my fear, as a resident, as a parent, as a taxpayer, is that people will lose even more than we've already lost, that sense of community. You know, already Plum is facing so many challenges in terms of its reputation. We need to come together. We need to unite Plum. And the way that we do that is by keeping our community intact. I, for one, do not want a vacant building in my community and then have my taxes go up to pay for new schools in other parts of Plum, to pay for busing my child, who doesn't have, both of my children, who don't have to be bused currently, to pay my tax dollars to now bus them to the other part of our borough. It makes no sense. And again, it's been brought up time and time again. Your tax increase that you are going to experience sometime in the near future, which will probably be heftier than it could have been had it been raised previously, that tax increase is not because of Regency Park Elementary. We will not shoulder that burden. It is because of other expenditures that need to be spent, you know, and that's all part of how a district runs. But I just want to bring back to this timeline. We talked about what these different options were, and someone actually brought a new option to the table this evening, which I think, you know, I would have liked to have heard this option way back in March of 2014, or I'm sorry, March 10th of 2015, when the options were being discussed. But four options at that time were presented regarding construction. Option 1, Regency Park renovations, which was estimated $11.1 million. We found out later that those renovations would be even more expensive, which necessitated the idea of, "Well, let's just build new since it's going to be about the same amount of money either way." So number 2 was a new Regency Park, which would be $11.3 million. Number 3, Regency closure with Center addition, $8.1 million. Now, I've talked to many people who also have worked on construction on the new Pivik and on Holiday Park, and they assured me that that $8.1 million figure would definitely have increased costs, not to mention the increased costs of the busing of all of the children from Regency Park and keeping the new Holiday Park open, or the old Holiday Park open. Number 4, Regency closure with adding on to O Block, $8.1 million. So we had six board members who were in favor of option 2, which was the new Regency Park. Two members, Mr. Kalella and Mr. Zucco, favored option number 3, which was adding on to Center. We had a vote. We had a vote. The board voted to build a new Regency Park because that was the best option that was presented to them. That's what makes the most financial sense. These children need to go somewhere. They need to have a quality school, a safe school, and in my mind, we need to have the accountability of asking the board to move forward tonight with Act 34 and to listen to the public and spend our tax dollars wisely, but provide the education that the children deserve. All these signs here that are in the front of the auditorium, these represent families that could not be here tonight, that are on vacation, that maybe parents had to work, other people that wanted their voices to be heard tonight that could not make it to this meeting. And I ask you to look at the faces of the children that are present here and as well as the ones that are on that board because they're who we're fighting for. We're not just here demanding that we want a special treatment or that we want a special school. We want to maintain what we have, which is a quality education and a good-performing school with teachers who care. We want to be able to get to our school quickly in case of an emergency. We want those benefits of things that we already have, but we're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for what you promised, which was to build a new Regency Park Elementary. Thank you.
Jennifer Kearney, 417 Mower Drive. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just have to get up and say that in March, six of you voted for a new Regency. All of this discussion we're having tonight should not even be happening. The vote already happened. If the public wanted a say, they should have been at these meetings before the vote happened and expressed their opinion. Now we're having the discussion after the vote already happened. That's not usually what happens. You voted for Holiday Park and Pivik, and it went through. Why do we have to stand here listing all these facts and figures? The vote happened. And whether the community likes that or not, I have to tell you, the vote happened. And I think you're on a very slippery slope here if you decide you're going to put it up for a public vote because apparently, if a majority of the board votes for it and someone on the board doesn't like it, in this case, Mr. Kalella, they can just call for a public vote. Well, in my case, I'm very passionate about Regency, but somebody else might be passionate about something else. And the board might vote yes for their issue, and someone may not like it and then call for a public vote. That's a very slippery slope you're on because we elect you to make those decisions, not the public. The public is not making those decisions because we elect you to make those decisions for us. And I just want the public to understand that. We are fighting for a school that was already voted yes. I just want everyone to understand that. My only other comment is about these tax increases, and it drives me nuts to hear what these people are saying because last year, there were several of you that did vote for a tax increase. And Mr. Kalella, and I'm sorry, I don't have my notes tonight, but I know Mr. Kalella was one, I think Mr. Daldel was one. This year, they voted no for a tax increase. Last year, they voted yes. There might be a reason, and I would love to hear it, but a tax increase is going to happen. One was voted on last year where a lot of the board did vote for a tax increase, it just wasn't the majority, so it didn't go through. But this year, that didn't happen. And I'm just, I'm floored that we have to be standing here again with these arguments when we already should have gone forward with this building of Regency. So tonight, I am just asking you to keep your promise that was made in March. Pass Act 34 and build us a new Regency, not because we think we deserve one, but because it was already voted for. Thank you.
Just to follow up, I just want to be clear. I do appreciate your comments, but please understand that we're voting to advertise for the Act 34 hearing. The Act 34 hearing is another public meeting, and at that meeting, we'll solicit comments, and then the board will have to wait a period of time, I think it's 60 days. We're looking to double-check because there's a lot of dates. Then we have to wait 60 days, and then we have to vote. So there is going to be an official Department of Education-required vote 60 days after the Act 34 hearing. So I just want to be clear about that. Good, I'm sorry.
Did any of you people ever, oh, my name is Anne, and that's my husband, John. Zee Zee Anne. We live at 522 Deborah Jane Drive, and my nieces and nephews went to Regency. My two kids that I adopted went to Regency, and now my grandchildren are going to be going to Regency, hopefully Regency. And they're in, one's in the first grade and one's in preschool this year, and that isn't fair to any of us. Our kids are very important. Our kids are very important to us. And these kids had a really, my kids had a really good education in this school. And also, did anybody ever consider that these kids have to get up way earlier in the morning, these young kids, go out into the wintertime and have to take a bus to school? Did anybody consider that? No. You're just worried about your damn taxes and everything else. Let's build every, all the other schools, but we can't have one. My husband, John, is going to say something right now.
I find myself a bit ill-equipped to speak to such an august group, and I can't address your budgetary problems. But I'm going to give you some observations. When I pull up in front of Regency, what I see, the first thing I see is a beautiful building. I've always been impressed by the brickwork on that building, and that sounds kind of stupid, but I'm an engineer and things like brickwork impress me. Then I go inside the school and I see nice, long hallways. It looks like it's paved in marble, I don't know exactly what, but on each side of this nice, long hallway are classrooms. Now, if you can walk into any one of these classrooms and you don't see holes in the plaster, you don't see light fixtures hanging, you see a very nice, bright, decorated, well-furnished classroom, full of kids and very, very, very nice teachers, very competent. This is in sharp contrast to some of the schools I've been to, because I've been to very tough inner-city schools, where you did have holes in the plaster, you did have light fixtures hanging, and where teachers were almost afraid to teach in there. In fact, some of these schools that I went to, North Side, South Side, they had kind of a dress code. That dress code was black jackets, chains, and switchblade knives, okay? Now, none of you people have been through any of that, I don't think you have anyway. But you have a beautiful building in pristine condition, and you're tearing it down. And in my, in my mind, that's a travesty. I don't know what your budgetary concerns are, but even if there is a raise in taxes, if you spread that over the entire community of Plum, it can't be that much. So with that, I've said what I needed to say.
Thank you. Just to clarify, as we continue to, we were thinking 60 days was to close the building. So, all right, so we have to advertise for 20 days and then we would have the hearing. We tend to have that scheduled for August 25th. Then we would have a 30-day period after votes where people could submit written, written com, I'm sorry, for citizens' comments. And there's a stenographer here, and that becomes a public document, and then you can submit in writing, and that becomes part of the public record. And the vote would be September 29th temporarily. So once, if we continue along this path, I think we're heading down this evening, we'll let the public know as soon as we make those decisions. So I apologize.
No problem, I'll just keep real short. My name is Debbie Verratti. I live at 544 Debra Jane Drive in Regency Park. I am a 1990 Penn Hills graduate. I moved to Plum 20 years ago to raise my family. My son will be graduating Plum High School this year. My 15-year-old has never been able to go to Plum, he's a special needs student. I'm speaking as a homeowner in Regency Park. I have three houses right around me on my corner that are up for sale that my elderly neighbor have moved out of. I am for a tax increase, and I am for you promising to keep your word on your vote to build a new Regency school. Thank you.
I wanted to say that I have several children in this school system, and I moved to 1.15239 School District because of the research we did before we moved. We moved to this area because of the ability to have this education that is highly esteemed that you have given the rest of the community, all the years of the past. And we want you to continue to have the future generations be able to have this opportunity. So please don't fail the future generations to be able to have what you have given, all the children of Plum's community with Regency. Please consider the future, because it took us time to be able to get to buy a home here. And there are people in line, and they're coming. They're not going to not come here, they're going to continue to come here. So don't fail future generations, please. And God bless.
Can I have your name and address, please? Ma'am? Ma'am?
318 Allegheny Avenue, Plum Borough. 15239. Barbara Hankinson. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Scott Gracie. I live at 641 Regency Drive. I've been sitting here and everyone's talking about how we can't let emotion make our decisions. However, you can't eliminate emotion from this. Even the people here who are like, well, I don't want to raise my taxes, that's based on emotion. So both sides are emotion. Correct? Second, as far as the referendum goes, I think we already did that. As we've had, there was an advertisement, nice article by you. Everyone has seen the article, knows the sides. However, we're what, 50 to 5 in the vote? Is that really going to change? The vote's now, in my opinion. Understand the demographic study. It was done by an expert. I consider myself a fantasy football expert. Things like that change all the time. I mean, that demographic study, that could change in two years, assuming astronomers can prepare it. I think, and I understand what Mr. Slago said, I was a tax guy before too. So I understand people calling and complaining about the raise of their taxes. You have that. I think the most disturbing thing I've heard is that our enrollment's declining. Shouldn't we be focused on how to increase that enrollment and bring that back? That's going to bring more tax dollars because we have the wage tax, right? Now, if we do figure that out, which I'm surprised you're not worried about, Mr. Slago, I would be worried about the decline in enrollment, decline in wage tax, to be truthful with you. So, what's that?
Excuse me, excuse me. You can address the board. Thank you.
So, I think we need to do, look at the future, not based on some demographic by some guy at CMU, but look to the future. Figure out how we can bring Plum back up to the level where it was and have the resources to do so. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Bill Chapla, 694 Pine Valley Drive. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after hearing some of the conversation, the Act 34, now, I'm not sure how it works, but it involves clearances, correct? No? Excuse me?
It's a different Act 34.
It's a different Act 34?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
The way the procedure works is, prior to submitting your estimated construction and project costs to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, you have to hold a public hearing. That public hearing requires 20 days' notice to the public. Then after the public hearing, there's a 30-day waiting period before you can submit those estimates to the Department of, excuse me, the Pennsylvania Department of Education. That's commonly referred to as Plan Con D. Currently, they may be adopting new procedures in the future. Be that as it all may. Tonight, what the board has under consideration on the agenda is to set that maximum building construction cost. That number has to be set before you have your public hearing. After that public hearing, again, you're going to wait 30 days, and then the board can vote to submit what's called Plan Con Part D to the Department of Education.
Thank you for the clarification.
Hi, I just have a follow-up question. First, I failed to give my address, 400 Vale Avenue or Drive, depending on if you believe the sign or the post office. And Mr. Price, thank you for that explanation. My question is involving the Act 34. So if we needed 20 days prior notice and then a 30-day waiting period after the public hearings, and the board voted 6 to 2 on March 31st, where, how, why are we so delayed? What?
They didn't vote. We, they, we've had a discussion to move forward to begin the planning process, but you have to have the Act 34 hearing. Nothing can happen until that Plan Con Part D is submitted.
Okay.
So we have to have that public hearing. It's a public hearing, there's a court stenographer here. It's a public document that we have to send, prove that we advertised, even in the Pittsburgh Legal Journal. So it's, we've been through this process a couple times with both the building and the closing of schools.
Okay. And that makes perfect sense. I mean, certainly, you're all the experts and I am not. Why then did we make the motion to start spending considerable money to make additional studies and to pull my child and the other parents out of Regency before we knew if this was going to happen? Why didn't we leave Regency open another year then while this Act 34 was approval, the clearance, and the plans were finalized? I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, that's a legitimate question, and I'd like to receive some feedback.
I did make that recommendation.
You did?
A couple weeks ago. And then there was, because I felt many of our board members wanted that opportunity to have those thoughts go through, to put the bit out there, and I thought, why are we going to remove these children? Well, we still have to go through this whole process. And our, our construction guys are here and they said, look, we can do this in 18 months, we can do this in a summer, summer, in a school year, essentially. And I made that as sort of a compromise. Okay, let them stay where they are, and then we can move forward from there. But then I was overruled and the majority said, no, let's move forward, let's do the hearing, and let's build the school now.
So can I ask, for those that voted to move forward, what was the logic behind that? Because you hear so much emotion, and that emotion is because our kids are getting moved around. No one, whether you're a senior or a parent of a young child, wants to have, to explain to your child, I don't know where you're going to go next year. And that's the conversation that 274 or however many students are currently enrolled, I'm not good at statistics, are having. We are having those conversations. So can someone please, I just need to understand the logic. Because to me, we're fighting and we're arguing, and there's all this passionate talk, and it seems like we've really put the ball in motion before we were prepared. I have been around and now, you know, I graduated from Plum '93, been back in Plum for nine years, and this conversation has been happening. So how are we still at this point? I really want to hear someone who voted against what Ms. Stepnick recommended to just explain, because it doesn't seem logical. Can anyone give me an explanation? So this is really concerning, because I'm not trying to be nasty, I'm not trying to speak from emotion, I'm trying to speak from a logical point of view. And it doesn't seem like what you did as a board made any sense. And my child and 275 other kids are going to suffer the consequences. They are going to be moved to Holiday Park, which that building is older, but so what? Regency's older. Well, their kids will survive. They're going to be moved to Holiday Park for a year, and no one's going to know where they're going to go after that. So then what, next year, we're going to open back up Regency, or we're going to move them to Center? Shame on you for not finalizing these plans before you started involving the children. I just, I'm horrified. And in this day and age, when there is so much negative attention, whether it's deserved or not, there's a lot of attention on this district. And I want to be a plowed, proud Plum alumni. I can't be proud of this decision. I would like to see us rectify this immediately so that my child and everyone else's children aren't impacted any further.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Maggie Beckner. I live on Francis Road. I have two children that currently attend Center Elementary. We've heard a lot from the Regency parents tonight, but I think what also needs to be heard is the concerns of all of the parents in Plum Borough School District right now. I attended most of the meetings that came into play with redistricting. And the idea that was hit over and over and over again was class size, class size, class size. That was why we did the redistricting. That's why, you know, we wanted children to go to the school that was closest to their home, their neighborhood school, and have class sizes that were manageable. My children this year, my kindergartner was in a classroom of 25 or 26 children with no aid. These are five and six-year-old kids. My second grader was in a class of 26 kids also as well. Those, it's too large. The class sizes are too big. Now, unfortunately for Regency, their class sizes, I believe, were a little bit smaller this year. I think what all parents want in this district right now is a fair education for all of the kids, regardless of what school they are attending. And in regards to the tax information here going around, I would think it's safe to say that most people in our district are living on a fixed income or some sort of budget. I don't think it's that whether you're retired or you're in the working class, that doesn't mean that all of a sudden you have a tremendous amount of discretionary income that you can throw out the window. We all work on a budget. And I think most of us would be more than happy to pay a little bit of extra money since it has been nine years since a tax increase to see that we are developing our borough and not tearing it down.
Thanks.
Hi, Leanne Weiss, 425 Vale Drive. I just wanted to point out on the timeline that I have here for the information of everyone present, that it was 84 days after voting for a new Regency Park that the Plum School Board voted not to advertise an Act 34 hearing. And that's honestly what spurred all of the actions that have happened after this, is that further delayed the process. Now, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that $384,000 has already been spent to draw plans for a new building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that is correct. So just so everyone here is clear on that, there's been $20,000 spent on a demographic study. There has been $384,000 spent on plans for a building for our kids that they voted to pass already. So what happens if you choose not to build a new Regency? That money was just flushed right down the toilet. I just really feel that everyone here needs to know where we are in this process. So please, this yellow paper is circulating, this is the timeline. This shows you where we are in this process. The board voted, our kids have been moved, that ball is already in motion. We need to maintain this neighborhood and build a new Regency Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice call. Any other comments? Thank you for your comments tonight, greatly appreciate it. Yes? Yes.
My name is Greg Stattler, I've already spoken once. My question is, all the people at Regency Park are afraid of busing children. I asked the board, why haven't they built a new school at Ramparts? Or built a new school at Logan's Ferry? Or built a new school in the town of Sort? I bet you there's nobody even here from the town of Sort, and I'd be willing to bet there's nobody here that even knows where Sort, the town of Sort, is. Is. That school was closed in '52. The school on Logan's Ferry was closed in '53. Those don't have new schools, and their children are all bussed to Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make it real short. Dave Wise, again, 425 Vale. Nobody wants to be or doesn't want to be bused. That's never been the issue. The only reason busing has come up is because of the distance it's going to be, traveling for two years, and the fact that the taxpayers, since taxes are an issue, are going to be absorbing the expense of two buses that haven't taken place in the past and for the indefinite future will need to absorb that cost. That's the busing issue. It's not whether or not they need to be on a bus. Some people, as Ms. Rigan spoke, already do ride a bus to Regency, others do not. The issue is the cost and who's paying for it. Thank you.
JR Pilick, 1100 Balkin Drive. Two quick things. One is, you know, yes, it is this board who decided not to go with the Act 34, and that's why we're all... why we're all here and trying to push it through. But it has been previous boards that has got us in this situation in the first place. Back before Pivot was built, everybody showed up from Regency because the board wanted to close Regency at the time. I remember my white Regency. We love Regency with purple lettering on them. Everyone's at the library, and the board said, you know what? We like what you stand for. We like what Regency is. We're not going to make a tough decision, so let's wait until the new Pivot's built, and then we'll decide on Regency. Okay, that was done. Next up was the Holiday Park Adelaide. Combine them. Here we go. Same thing happens. What are we going to do with Regency? What's the plan? No plan, sorry. We'll decide about Regency after this one is done. Now, why? Maybe it's because we hope the numbers were low enough to close it. But guess what? It's not. The problem now is, what do you do with all the extra kids? Do you shove them in the schools that you already built, too small probably, and have 30 kids in a room? Do you add on the Center and not have any idea how to run a five-run school yet? Haven't tried it? Haven't seen it? Is cafeteria big enough? Who knows? Or remodel or build Regency? I mean, that's where we're stuck at. We put ourselves in this position years and years into making. But the fact of the matter is, you promised a new Regency, you borrowed the money to rebuild it, the room is there, you have room for growth. Houses are going up. Houses are being sold. I saw two houses go right up in the market in Whispering Pines. Gone. 50 days or less. Actually, one was about 20. The ones that aren't selling, I'd say they're overpriced maybe. Maybe someone's asking for too much. But people are moving into Plum. People still want to live here. People still want to be part of this community. I graduated from here. I live here, and I'm blessed to be a part of the teaching staff here. I can't express enough what a great place it still is in Plum. And I hope that these decisions and this stuff is not making people walk away. My second thing is quickly, I hope that during Personnel, part of the agenda, that you can at least give some details or explain about the catch-up increases for the Act 93 employees. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zuko, Chair. Approve the use of facilities request as listed.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I wanted to see if anybody needed a five-minute break. No? Okay.
Does the board want to take a break? All right. All right.
I'm the only one that can't sit much longer, so it's okay.
You need a break, Michelle?
No, I'm okay. Let's just go.
Approve the use of facilities requests as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to waive policy 707 Sunday use of facilities as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the YMCA annual three-year rental increase to $1,238 for the 2015-16 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think the motion reads 3% increase. Three-year. That's okay. Any other discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pay the GOB invoices as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Plan Con I interim reporting for the new Holiday Park as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one comment on Mr. Clala. Just to clarify, Mr. Drake, the moratorium was lifted, and we actually started to receive some monies on Pivot. You said the moratorium had not been lifted. I'm letting you know that we did start to receive money.
Any other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resolution as presented to permanently close Pivot School located at 100 School Road as of the commencement of 2015-16 school term.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are there bats?
We were told that there are bats in the chimney at the old Pivot. And I guess we're going to have to find out how we can get them removed, because they are protected animals.
I think it depends on what kind of bat.
Okay. Well, yeah, you might be right. They're all different bats. Yeah. No, no, no. You're right. You're right on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval toward the demolition bid of Regency Park School, Old Pivot Elementary School, maintenance garage, and the former administration building to A.W. McNabb, the lowest bidder, in the amount of $268,000.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I have one more thing. I walked through Regency yesterday because of all of the damage that had been done to the building in the last week, and I wanted to see for myself what had transpired. I just want to make sure there's ceiling tiles that are in cases, boxes. We're going to be taking that stuff out of there, right? That's not just going to sit there and go away? I mean, it's brand-new stuff.
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure. I don't want to waste something that's absolutely brand-new that we can keep and use.
Okay. Any other discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise an Act 34 hearing to build a new Regency Park Elementary School for August 25, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. in the Plum High School auditorium.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Now, you know what? I have a question. I think when Mr. Russo was here last time, when did he say if we continue with this process that he would be able to start breaking ground? Does anybody remember?
I think we're still looking at two school years. We're still looking at two school years.
I thought he said November, if I remember correctly.
November, yeah, it was.
Yeah, that's what I thought, November.
Breaking ground? I thought he said February, because I remember him.
I have to go back to my notes.
I thought he said February. So if we would delay the Act 34, it couldn't be February. I thought he said February, but I want to make sure that somebody agrees with me.
Yeah, it's February.
Yeah, okay. All right. So if we would delay the Act 34, then that would delay the breaking of the ground, right?
Right. We don't want to do that.
So therefore, we could not possibly let the students stay in Regency this year. If we allowed the students to stay in Regency this year, that means we would not be able to continue.
Loretta, I think the question that really became, one of the parents talked about it, is the fact that our engineer of record, and I asked that at the last meeting, to give us a statement that that building was safe, and I got no response. So if our engineer of record won't give us a statement that the building is safe, we can't put students back in there.
Well, I know. I'm agreeing with you. And when the person who was there at the podium, I think it was a woman, and she wanted to know if anybody knew why we could not allow the students to be in Regency this year. I think it's because Mr. Russo said he would start breaking ground in February. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Two reasons.
I've been thinking about it.
I have another question. Mr. Muscatello's here. When were we planning on having him speak?
Why don't, you know, Joe sat there patiently. Joe, can, am I coming up to the microphone? Just some questions for you so that we can move this forward a little bit and get you out of here.
Sure.
One of the questions that we keep hearing is the $10 million that the board borrowed that I voted no last year. And of the $10 million, how much of that money, before anything was taken out, was available for construction? I know we capitalized the interest on that loan.
So the usable dollars for?
Useful dollars.
Was $8,618,000.
So only, we netted 8.6 million out of a $10 million bond.
Yes, because a million dollars was set aside for capitalized interest.
Okay. The second thing is, one of the things that we get concerned about, at least I get concerned about, is looking forward, forward-looking, what exactly this means. And that is, how can, whether we use that money or borrow additional money for a bus garage or for any other thing, we still need $13 million. So the question becomes, how does that impact our debt service?
Well, I could tell you where your debt service is today.
Okay.
Right now, your debt service, after reimbursement, after taking into account any state monies, is currently $5,950,000. It will max out currently in the '18-'19 school year at $6,333,000. And the reason that it goes up from 5.9 million to 6.3 is because you're using the capitalized interest to delay certain interest payments until the, for three years.
So if we had to borrow, say, $9 million to finish this project, what type of debt service would we be looking at in '18-'19 then?
Well, the way that I set up these numbers is that I took into account $7 million for the new Regency, $3 million for the buses and the bus terminal to reimburse the 14-bond issue, and $1,004,000 for the new Holiday Park to reimburse the 2014-bond issue, because I believe part of that money was taken out of that bond issue, and it was going to be reimbursed.
So what would that do to our debt service in that area?
So taking all that into account, the debt service this year would be $5,990,000. And it would grow to, in '18-'19, to $7 million.
$7 million?
Yes.
About $1 million.
Well, it's about $700,000 from.
'18-'19, but that's the bus garage.
Bus garage, the bus terminal.
But that's the 1.4 for the Holiday Park that we have to finish paying out of this. Okay. So it's not just Regency?
No.
No.
Just clarifying.
It's our debt service.
It would be a $12 million bond issue approximately.
Okay. So we're looking at $1 million in four years, additional debt service?
From where you are today to '18-'19, it would be a $1 million increase.
$1 million, okay.
Approximately, you know, the interest rates change. And I'm not exactly sure what the reimbursement's going to be on Regency and the new Holiday Park, so I'd have to talk to the architect. So those numbers may be a little bit less. Not tremendously less, but a little bit less.
Not tremendously less. $1 million, okay. Any other questions for Joe? We can send him on his way.
Well, doesn't the principal, you know, the amount of money that we pay every year keep going down because we're paying off? At least, that's what you were telling us before. So even though we add a million, how does that factor in?
Well, your debt service payments stay level. If you would do nothing at all, and this includes the $10 million that you borrowed in 2014, your debt service would all go away in '38-'39. By borrowing that $12 million, what we do is called, it's called a wraparound structure. Basically, you're paying the majority of your principal when all your other bonds mature. So the new bond issue would mature in '39-'40, basically. So it's about a year difference.
Okay. Any other questions? Everybody understand that?
No, I'm good.
John, you understand? A million bucks. Okay. Michelle? Good?
So you mean, so our debt service now is approximately every year we pay 7.3 million?
No, our debt service will go from 5.9 this year with what you need for the capitalized interest, because we borrowed money on the capitalized interest. We borrowed money for the bus garage, and we borrowed money for the new school. Your debt service will go from 5.9 million to $7 million in '18-'19, which is a $1 million increase.
But we don't have to capitalize the interest?
No, you don't.
All we're doing is tacking it on at the end.
Yes.
You've got to pay it now.
Yeah, it's either pay it now or pay it later, basically. If you don't use the capitalized interest, then your debt service would go higher. And pretty much, we can structure the increases in your debt service between now and '18-'19 in any amount from that 5.9 to that's approximately $7 million. So if you wanted to step it in, I tried to keep it as level as possible, you know, until that period of time. But we can structure it any way, you know, the board would like.
So we're saying our prior debt is $154 million?
That's total of principal and interest. That's everything. Like, the principal amount?
Right.
The principal amount, you know, up until 2014 was $111 million, principal.
Up to the last bond issue?
Yeah, up to 2014, yeah. And if you wanted to include, you know, the proposed, doing all the projects, the debt or the increase in principal would go to about $123 million.
That's our max?
I haven't calculated, Cliff usually calculates a borrowing base, but it's going to be close to that amount of $123, you know, maybe $130. We'd have to see where the revenues of the school district ended in 14-15, because it's based on your last three years of revenues.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
So by not raising taxes this year and taking 1.9 out of our fund balance for all intents and purposes, wherever funds we took them from, what's going to happen to our bond rating?
Well, the, whenever we get to school, we get to school district rated per bond issue, and that's one of the things that they look at. They do look at what your capital reserves are, your ability to raise taxes, and how the wealth levels of the school district, and whether or not the school district is growing. Meaning, growing, you know, new houses, new revenue from taxes. So they do take care, they do look at those four things. And one of the, and, you know, having a reserve is important.
You know we don't have much of one left, right?
Well, whenever we do the next, I keep track whenever we do the next official statement, so.
How often do they do that?
I'm sorry?
How often do they assess and come up with new bond ratings? Is it every year?
Usually, they'll do it every time you do a bond issue. And then, if you don't do a bond issue for a while, there's surveillance, so they may call Gene and ask him for certain financial information, certain statistics, you know, every other year, every three years.
One of the things that they were most impressive with the last time they rated us was our post-war fund of $2.5 million that was to be used for capital projects that this board rated to use for operational expenses.
Yeah. I have the last report that I can forward to Gene and send it to the board members. And basically, they assess the school district. They tell you the pluses and minuses of what they thought.
Okay. Thank you. We'll put that, we get to finance, we need to maybe incorporate that $1 million on what on what it means in the year eighteen, nineteen for us, 'cause clearly that, that will have an impact on us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Where, where, we said, do we have a second on that number?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to advertise Act Thirty-four hearing? All right, we have motion in a second. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a resolution for adopting a maximum project cost and maximum building construction cost in new Regency Park Elementary School as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Can we have those numbers for the minutes?
Yes, the maximum building construction cost is nine million, two hundred, fifteen thousand, five hundred, and the maximum project cost is twelve million, fifty-nine thousand.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Do you, do you wish to know what those terms mean?
Sure.
Maximum building construction cost includes your general contractor, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and your typical structural expenses, fixtures and equipment, meaning desks and things along those lines, and your architectural and engineering fees for them. Maximum project cost adds in primarily, uh, rough grading, site improvements, access roads.
Mr. Zucco, how many square feet is this building?
I believe it's fifty thousand or fifty-four thousand.
Fifty thousand? I think Mr. Russo said that the other two previous buildings were at a cost of two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and five dollars a square foot. So if I'm doing the math, that's over ten million dollars. So do we need to change the maximum project cost? Can we do that, Mr. Price?
Well, that's, keep in mind, you're, that's a number it's backed into based upon the architect's estimate as to what it will cost to actually do this building. If you lower it-
You can raise it.
Without thinking about it, um, you could run into problems down the road, obviously.
I don't wanna lower it.
Would some of those numbers-
Because you can't spend more than that if it, well, let me say this, your bids have to be within, cannot exceed eight percent of those numbers.
We've already spent some of those, that money, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
That's included in that number.
Okay.
What you've spent is in that number.
Okay.
Don't we have to have, like, another Act Thirty-four hearing if, if you go above that?
Yes, that's what can happen. But keep in mind, you're, well, you've already got your building designed and out for bid. It's based upon the bid you receive.
Is that some of the information, like, what, the one point four on Holiday Park? Is that what we're-
That, that, don't mix it up with your bond issue.
No.
This is strictly the cost of providing a new Regency Elementary School.
Okay. Happy with the numbers, everybody's happy with the numbers, we can go ahead and do it. I'm just a little concerned at nine point, I know the architect did that, but architect left, right? Architect, Mr. Ackerman left?
He was replaced.
He was replaced? Mr. Gable.
Yep.
Dave Gable. Okay. But then all the, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. No. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of resolution to subdivide and consolidate high school and bus garage properties, seven thirty-six H eighty-nine, eight forty-nine J one-ten, and eighty-nine N three sixty-nine.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify what this is, is, uh, since our bus, current bus garage property is basically adjacent to the, the same piece of property the high school's on, and then there was another little piece of property lot, and, uh, I guess according to the old, uh, surveys and everything, nothing kinda matched up real good. So in order to, uh, put the old bus garage up for sale, we have to, uh, consolidate these into one, uh, lot and then subdivide it for the sale. I just wanted to make that clear.
Basically, what you're doing is creating a subdivision of three properties that you presently have, which is the high school campus, the ball fields, and the old transportation center and garage. And you're reconfiguring it so that you can subdivide one portion off for, um, sale. And that would be the old transportation facility property.
More discussions? No other discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to market for sale, the bus garage building and property lot two, consisting, consisting of six point eight, seven acres located on Leachburg Road.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No other discussion?
No, I, I just wanna, a comment. There's been a lot of criticism about purchasing the new garage. Now, although the safety of our children are very important, so is the safety of our employees, and, um, this old bus garage was an unsafe building to house our, our employees. So, um, one of the main reasons why we did buy the new garage was for the safety of our employees, which is, uh, also important, um, to our district.
I agree with you, Kevin. I, as a matter of fact, um, we were, I know this was, 'cause it was, um, property we're discussing, we, it was exec session, but I had indicated several times to our prior transportation chair, not you, um, that I wanted, when we got close to this, some sort of public meeting, so we could put up slides and say, "Look what's wrong with our bus garage." Um, bus sizes are different than they were when that bus garage was built. There, there's actually a corner of that bus garage that the buses are hitting as they're coming around the corner. Um, we have patchwork that place as best as we can, and sixty people are sitting in a room for their morning meeting that maybe is made for ten or twelve. So, um, I agree, and I, I wish we did have that, I wish that our, the former chair of transportation did have that public meeting, because I wanted the folks to see exactly what we're up against up there. But what's done is done.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stebnik.
Uh, I, I'll, I'll just add one more little comment on that, too. Michelle mentioned that we, we, or the buses are different sizes and we have outgrown them. The new buses that we're getting are the forty-eight passenger buses, but the actual wheelbase is only four inches different, so we're gonna have, uh, instead of the seventy-two passenger bus, we're gonna have the forty-eight, but it's gonna have the ability to, to travel in, in a small, just, it's almost the same turning circle. Uh, the problem was, though, when we would go to back them into that, uh, old facility, there wasn't enough room, because they were longer. So we have physically outgrown that facility, as well as the erosion and the blacktop just falling into the creek on one side, that, from the water that came on the other side. Again, we have, we have photographs of that hillside caving in, and the estimated, we couldn't dig out that hillside anymore. Everybody said, "Well, why don't you just, you know, make it larger?" Uh, because we put our ball field up on top of that hill, and we couldn't, uh, dig that hillside out. And the estimated cost of digging that hillside was, uh, almost a million dollars. So we, we were, we were due for, for a much better and safer transportation center, and it's also gonna serve as our maintenance, uh, facility also. So as we tear down, uh, the old maintenance and administration buildings, that's where everything is gonna be now. Just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Did Kimball do an official, um, analysis of that facility, our old bus garage? 'Cause I never saw anything.
Did who?
Well, the architects, or whoever it is, that, or what is it, soil and rock?
Oh, you don't need somebody to go in there and do that. Yeah, Arnie did. Arnie went in, and they, they did it, they did an estimate, and they did a, uh, a survey, you know, I'm not survey-
Oh, yeah, they did.
When they actually went in and looked at that hillside, and, uh, they, they did set, I guess, soil samples and stuff. Uh, they did, they did do that.
And I thought there was some discussion, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I went back through notebooks, and that's, you know, my little tablet's how I keep myself organized, and I filed a bunch of things away. And I remember seeing something about seven hundred thousand dollars for improvements to the current bus garage from when I first got on the board, and I don't know if that was possible-
Well, there, there was-
Forward, I mean, so, I, I don't, I don't, I remember that discussion, but it wasn't very clear as to what they were.
Yeah.
And I, again-
Yeah, the facility itself, I mean, the garage down there now, we could only fit, uh, three buses in? No, two buses, three.
How many bays are there?
There's two, two bays coming in from each opposite direction, but you couldn't put two seventy-two buses in there. So if one was in for an engine, overhaul, or something, you were limited. So, uh, and not only that, yeah, there was, the, the, the building itself was inadequate, it needed repaved. Uh, we would've had to re, reinforce the, I would say, the west side near the creek, uh, because that's, that's where they put the new housing plan in, and like I said, I've got recent photographs, uh, where the water has just completely eroded the dirt under the blacktop, and, and they actually had to put a, uh, a, one of those cement curbs so that the bus wouldn't back into the hole and go over the edge of the creek. And the, the guardrails were leaning back already, not from being hit, but by erosion. So we're gonna be getting out of there just in time. Uh, it's, it's a nice facility for the, some other use, but we've outgrown it, and if we wanna maintain a good fleet, uh, and have, uh, a good safe transportation system. I might add, we got all the new radios into the new buses and the, uh, the, the new system that's going to give us our, uh, bus stops and everything, that compass system, tremendous.
Well, I, I've been down there. I mean, we, I think we all went down, took a tour of it just recently, and it certainly needed a lot of work. I mean, it's, it's not a pretty sight, I know.
And, um-
I don't know whether OSHA's been down there, just, you know, condemn it or what.
Dr. Glasgow, I'd like to also address this issue, the email we got, that we're not moving because nobody wants to go up the hill to use the bathroom. What? I, I'm, I'm really at a loss for words for this.
We're talking about Porta-John's being put in there. I don't, I don't understand.
There's a beautiful facility above, I mean, and for the amount of folks that stay all day, I, I'm really at a loss. We, as a board, voted on a plan as to what we were gonna do with our facilities for this upcoming school year, and the big plan was to move the buses so we could start the school year fresh with our new technology, the new garage, um, and truthfully, we originally talked about doing something different. Scott didn't wanna be away from the mechanics and away from the dri- he didn't want everything separated, so why all of a sudden, because somebody, people don't wanna go up the hill to use the bathroom? Are we delaying all of this move? I'm, I'm truly confused.
I think you probably have more discussion at the August fourth meeting, and I'll have Scott there, and you can hear from him.
It's ridiculous.
Did we vote on item eleven?
Not yet, no.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The facilities can be met on July seventh. Mr. Zucco will make his report.
Okay, since we've just about talked, uh, everything about this one, uh, they, we are going to be having the, the bids for the remodeling and use of the new facility, I believe, on August fourth. Jim?
Yes.
And, uh, we're also going to be having, I believe, on August twentieth, there's going to be the dedication of the new Holiday Park.
Yes.
Uh, is there, uh, an all, is that an all-day affair?
No, I believe we're shooting for six P.M.
Okay.
We'll get the invitations, we're working on the invitations, I think, next week to get it out, get it publicized, but yeah.
I'll be on vacation.
You'll miss it. Okay, that's, that, that's it.
Thank you. The committee, the whole, will meet on Tuesday, August fourth, here at six o'clock in the high school auditorium. Personnel committee, Mr. Kevin Daldell, chair. Recommend approval to accept the following leaves as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to recall Amy Palumbo from furlough status to active employee for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Alfred Christian, bus driver, retroactive to July tenth, two thousand and fifteen.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to appoint Dolores Stucker, cook manager at Holiday Park Elementary School, at a rate of twenty-three thousand dollars for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year, effective July twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to appoint Melissa Santapicio, access administrative assistant, at a contracted rate, effective July eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Just, just, I have a couple things, and, um, you know, when we add a position like this, usually we see a job description. I haven't seen a job description. Currently, we have our paraprofessionals accessing access and billing for it. Now, we're gonna have a third party do it. Are we getting ourselves in people doing bargaining unit work? And, uh, I think it's a position that's not needed. But clearly, it's up to the board, and we talked about putting a one-year moratorium on the position, but that's not in this motion. So, that's how I feel about it.
Uh, Sal, I believe you're right. I think we, 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 I, I think, I don't think you were present, I think you were in the hospital at the time, and I think we did say, "Well, let's give it a try for one year," and reevaluate it at the end of that one year. Is that possible to add this, or is this, is that something that's understood?
I, I think that we have the ability, as, you have the ability, the school board, to create positions and then eliminate positions as, as necessary, or as you see fit.
Okay, well, if this doesn't pan out in a year, I'd like to revisit this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. No. Motion passes.
Recommend approval to hire Jessica Greigle, food service director, at a prorated salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, with an effective date to be determined by the superintendent.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Erica Skinner, part-time school psychologist, beginning August seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, to January twenty-nine, two thousand and sixteen, at a per diem rate of one hundred and ninety dollars.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following teachers, at the contracted rate, effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Brian Owens, full-time custodian, at the contracted rate, effective date to be determined by the superintendent.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following long-term substitute teachers, at a per diem rate of one hundred and ninety dollars, as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Those various starting dates, are they all, start of the school year?
They, they are varied.
Very.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following substitute teachers at a per diem rate of $100 a day, as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to furlough Joanne Signor, cook manager at Adelaide Stevenson Elementary School, effective for the 2015-16 school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Joan, I apologize. Cut ahead of you. Quick on the draw. Okay, sorry. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This is a furlough and this is very sensitive. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Daudel?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepanik?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. Kala.
No.
Motion passes.
Recommend approval to accept Vicki Rossler, volunteer major et sponsor for the 2015-16 school year.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to permit Dwight Locke and Doug Morris, Plum High School security officers, to sell no more than four benefit days for the 2014-15 school year back to the district at the 2014-15 per diem rate.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion.
I'm sorry, I just, I mean, is there a reason why, um, the security officer wouldn't use four days? I'm just, I wasn't at the executive session. I apologize. I believe they, they did it in the past and they didn't use them, asking to sell them back.
Okay.
I think this was the last year, though, we were allowing that.
Okay. Any other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the 2015-16 staffing report as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the Plumborough School District and Plumborough Para Professional Education Support Professionals, ESP NEA PSEA, for a four-year term, commencing July 1, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Ms. Stepanik and Mr. Zuko for meeting with those folks. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I'd like to thank them for their service, actually, to the district as well. And I, this is a fair contract for the district and also for the paraprofessionals, and most importantly, our students, so.
I agree. Any other discussion? No other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepanik?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. Kala?
Yes.
Mr. Daudel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the salaries for the 2015-16 school year for the Act 93 administrators pursuant to the Act 93 agreement, retroactive to July 1, 2015, as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a catch-up increase for Act 93 administrators pursuant to the Act 93 agreement as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, it was asked on the citizens' comments, what this means. And, um, basically, in the Act 93, uh, contract, if, uh, one of the employees, uh, their salary is actually below the minimum, um, salary range for that position, we allow for a, uh, a catch-up provision where they can, uh, catch up to the minimum salary for that position. That's what the catch-up increases for.
Was it the minimum salary or the?
The minimum. They're below the minimum salary.
Minimum?
Minimum, yes. And they, um, they can have a catch-up provision so they can get caught up to the minimum salary for that position.
Kevin, what I'd also like to mention, there were only three employees on this, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
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 Okay, why don't we do roll call then, please?
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepanik?
No.
Mrs. White?
No.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. Kala?
Yes.
Mr. Daudel?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the salaries for the 2015-16 school year for the cook managers, retroactive to July 1, 2015, as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the salaries for the 2015-16 school year for the technology support staff, retroactive to July 1, 2015, as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Education committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, chair. Recommend approval to accept the following donations as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept Rebecca Moyes as consultant in the life skills classroom, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I want to thank Kathy Grasik for, uh, taking the initiative to do this life skills classroom. I think it's really a tribute to the school district.
Yes.
I really do. Any other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the contract with NHS Human Services for the 2015-16 school year as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the corrected contract with the AIU Waterfront Learning Services for the 2015-16 school year as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the district textbooks as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Apple lease purchase agreement for iPads, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Oh, excuse me. I apologize.
Recommend approval to accept the Apple lease purchase agreement for Mac books, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to discard selected library books.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, Doc, any memorial books are not being discarded. And I think I mentioned that before. So maybe we can assure the community that who has purchased memorial books for any deceased person, that they will be kept, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Did we vote?
Did we vote? No.
No, we did not vote. Okay, so we're on the library books. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The education committee met on July 7, 2015. Mrs. Gallagher will make this report.
Yes, uh, some of the things discussed, we did discuss that, um, the district handbooks for Oblock Junior High and the high school handbooks had small revisions in them, so they are on the website. And you can take a look at them. They're uploaded. Also, I just wanted to, um, give the community, um, some dates again. August 19th is high school orientation for any new student or for ninth gr- our upcoming ninth graders, 9:00 AM. August 19th, Oblock orientation for the junior high at 10:00 AM. Transportation is provided for both of those, um, orientations. August 20th is an elementary self-guided tour, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Provide your own transportation. And August 24th, there is a, um, self-guided tour at Oblock Junior High from 12:00 to 7:00 PM. And at the elementary schools, from 9:00 to 12:00 PM and 1:00 to 3:00. I also wanted to give the dates of open houses. I know some people like to put them on their calendars right away. Um, elementary open house is September 15th. The junior high is September 16th. And the high school is September 17th. I will be attending all three.
Congratulations.
Great for me. I have a child in each, each one of those, so, um, and that being said, um, school starts August 31st already.
It does. And all those dates are, should be listed up on the website. And if not, they'll be very soon, as well as the school calendar is up there as well. So, thank you. The committee of the whole, again, will meet August 4th, here in the high school auditorium at 6:00 PM. Finance committee, Mrs. Michelle Stepanik, chair. Recommend approval to accept the treasurer's report and bill payments for the month of June 2015, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Delinquent real estate taxes and fees collected by Anderson Price for the month of June, total $135,718 and 30 cents. Recommend approval to accept the budget transfers for June 2015, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just had a question for, these are all the year-end transfers, Gene?
No, these are the funds that would have occurred for June.
Just June?
Yes. The year-ends are the accruals.
Yeah.
The receivables. And, uh, the money that comes in July and August to get pulled back to June, there's a variety of them. That'll occur a little bit later.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to dispose or salvage six unusable school buses.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Just want to make it clear that, uh, this disposal of these six buses, uh, the major components such as transmissions, if they were good, have been saved. This is not, you know, we're not getting rid of buses. And we're also going to be providing, uh, the worst ones, I guess, for use by our fire departments for training, should the need ever arise.
And then we'll still sell them for scrap.
And we'll still sell them for scrap afterwards. So if you see a school bus burning somewhere in the middle of summer, you know, hopefully, that's just a training.
It better be.
It better be.
So we have a motion and a second.
Sorry, that came out wrong.
I know.
We need a vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The finance committee met on July 7, 2015. Ms. Stepanik will make this report.
Um, there, there really isn't much of a report. We sort of cruised through, um, the finance committee. We don't have a state budget. So, um, what that says, there's not much to actually say. I hope, maybe the longer that they're all sitting and looking at each other all summer, that we actually do get some sort of relief, uh, here in Plum and quite frankly, around the state. But it's, it is starting to make me a tad bit nervous that we don't have a budget and we don't have a solid number, um, going into the school year from the state, so. More to come, I hope.
Thank you.
Ms. Stepanik, can I make a few comments? Thank you. Just briefly, we did receive $114,000 in back billings from Access Program. They were, um, year-end things that tidied up and, which is a positive thing for the bottom line. In addition, I want to thank Kathy Grasik for filing Form 352 with the PDE to get some money, monies, uh, for our life skills program. So I'm interested to see how much money we're going to get from that. In addition, I do want to make some comments about the comments that were made to the board. First, about, uh, housing. Clearly, when I looked at Rustic Ridge, Highlands, Briarwood, Colonial Point, Cherry Springs, um, and a lot of other facilities, a lot, a lot of other small things, Chevella Estates, um, total of 788 units, numbered, built 630. And the enrollment in our school district still went down. So we have to remember that. That's an important thing to remember. And clearly, uh, the most important page on the demographic study is page number 80. Everybody should look at page number 80. It takes a look at Regency Park in particular. We do know now that, barring monies moving forward, it's going to add a million dollars to our debt service in the year 18, 19. We need to actually, Gene, go through a strategic plan and find out what that means. I mean, I was looking at $3.7 million deficit in 17, 18. Uh, it could be much higher now in 18, 19. And clearly, we need to know that before we, you know, as we move forward. And taxes aren't going to cover a $5 million deficit. It, that's just not it. So that's, that's a big number. Uh, what else? I do have a couple of other comments here that I, I made notes of. That's really about it. That'll work. Yeah, I'll come back and talk about them in the president's address.
Policy committee, Ms. Laura White, chair. Recommend approval to accept the following policies as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, policy number 138, uh, is, uh, one that has to do with English as a second language. And the only thing we did with that was clarify, clarify, excuse me, our relationship with the AIU. And I think we're taking over more of that in-house. And policy number 222, the tobacco and smoking, the only thing we did with that was add electronic cigarettes to the list of, uh, those things that are not permissible in the school, or else we're really outside the grounds. So, um, very minor kinds of, uh, things that happen in all these policies.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Anybody else has anything to say about any of them?
They're okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The policy committee met on July 7, 2015. White will make this report.
Well, really, I guess there's no report. The only thing is, we talked a little bit about some of the things that maybe we could be reviewing at future policy meetings. And, uh, I don't know if we're going to have one in August or not. Haven't decided yet because I know, uh, Dr. Rossi will not be here.
I'll run the policy meeting.
Will you run the, oh, wow, thank you. I'll have to call you.
All right, thank you. Safe and supportive Schools Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, chair. Recommend approval to accept the memorandum of understanding between the Burhoe Plum Police Department and the Plumborough School District, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The Safe and Support of Schools Committee met on July 7. Mrs. Gallagher will make this report.
Uh, yes, well, we really didn't meet. It was just the board members that met and we discussed, uh, um, the young to the old, to the medium, to the every, everything. So, you know, female, male, everybody. And I think that, you know, we're going to have, we're going to reach out to them in the next week, where we can do our kickoff meeting coming up. It is actually the day after Tuesday, August 4th. So again, we're really not going to be talking about anything on August 4th because we're going to have the kickoff meeting on August 5th. But, you know, just to reiterate that, you know, part of this committee is to build some public trust and have the confidence in our schools and just build relationships and communication. And, um, I think that we're on, hopefully, this is the right path. And we welcome anybody with creative ideas and anything that they would have to say in this area.
Thank you. Athletic committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, chair. Recommend approval of the resignation of Eric Gillis, eighth grade girls' basketball coach, for the 2015-16 season.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Andy Dill, junior high school boys' head soccer coach, effective immediately.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation as well.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, do we have anybody that comes upon us quite soon? Do we have anybody in mind?
I don't believe so.
For that position?
I'm not sure we do.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following coaches for the 2015-16 fall and winter season.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the 2015-16 fall season.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation as well.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say, opposed say no. Motion carries.
Food service and nutrition committee. Recommend approval to accept the 2015-16 food service Fund 50 budget as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a 10-cent increase in elementary lunch prices from $2.25 to $2.35.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think some of the increases, it has to do with the federal mandate for lunch prices. I think we need to increase that a little bit for the federal mandates.
So that it matches reimbursements and so forth, yeah.
Yeah.
Thought we didn't do it at the high school, so, whatever. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of participation in 2015-16 Pittsburgh Regional Food Service Directors Association food and bid supply bid, with U.S. Foods being primary supplier.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following suppliers for the 2015-16 school year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Food service and nutrition committee met on July 7th. Mr. St. Leger will make this report.
I'm going to defer to Kevin.
I'm sorry, Mr. Daldel will make this report.
Real briefly, in addition to what we already voted on, we did increase the prices 10 cents for the elementary schools, for the breakfast prices and the secondary lunches. We'll stay the same at $1.25 and 650, or, I'm sorry, 6, sorry, $2.60 respectively. We did discuss some miscellaneous items. Mrs. Lozero is going to retire on August 14th, and we want to thank her for her many years of service. We kind of summarized some of the things that have happened over her career, and just some other outstanding issues with the food service department. We did hire a new food service director. I want to thank Mrs. Lozero and the administration for bringing some excellent candidates for the interviews. We did have some final interviews with two candidates, and I thought both were very excellent and capable, and I think will fit very well into our school district. The one we hired is very passionate about working in a school district. Presently, she works for the University of Pittsburgh, and she serves something like 6,000 lunches a day, or something like that. So I think she will be a fine asset to the district, and I'm sure she won't fit Mrs. Lozero's shoes, but I'm sure she'll fit in quite well in our district. And I do want to thank again Mrs. Lozero for her years of service. I don't know if she's here, but I want to wish her an enjoyable, healthy, and long retirement. So thank you again, Mrs. Lozero, wherever you may be.
I agree.
Thank you.
I just had one item. You know, we're having a new food service director take the chair, and one of the things that I'm absolutely going to mandate, we talked about this before, is you have to have a complete financial audit for her, a new one, so that she understands, you know, where she's at in this whole process.
I thought we did that already.
No.
No, we, yes, that's absolutely not true, because we discussed it in doing this audit this summer, and we said yes to go do it. How could it not be done?
We contacted Mr. Coon, and he will come in, and he will do the food service department part of the audit first, so he'll have that report hopefully for the start of the school year.
Because we did ask for that back in May.
No, we have to do that. I mean, we have to be fair to this new employee.
No, but that's what I'm saying. We agreed to that months ago, so it shouldn't already have happened, or be happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eastern area schools, Mrs. Laura White, representative, recommend approval to accept the Eastern area schools joint committee board of school directors and mail ballot as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing this does is, okay, is the new officers that we have for this year, and I think we already discussed that. So we're just voting on the president, the vice president, and the secretary of surprise board.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of 2015-16 Eastern area schools special budget resolution and mail ballot resolution.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I have to do this by roll call, Aretha? Did they want this by roll call? Do you know what it is?
I don't know. Ask.
They generally are, I think.
But everybody always says yes, so I was letting you go this.
Yeah, you were letting me go.
I was.
Why don't we do a roll call, and just to make sure everybody's okay with it?
Well, you know, I was just going to have, make one comment. The budget this year is the same as it was last year, so there's no increase, you know, nothing else is going on. So, you know, we're not increasing prices, we're not doing anything. It's the same as it was last year. So, I don't know if that makes a difference, but I just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. St. Leger?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Madam President White?
Yes.
Mr. Zucca?
Yes.
Mr. Calella?
Yes.
Mr. Daldel?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I thank you as well.
Ms. White, do you have a report?
For me?
Do you have a report?
No, the only thing I was going to say, we're not going to meet until August 28th, yeah, 27th, August 27th. So we're not meeting in July at all.
Thank you. Legislative policy council, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, representative?
No report, other than, I was hoping this summer we were going to talk about the bus routes with the state to make sure that we're set to go, but I'm guessing we have to wait now until we're ready to move. No budget, so I guess hopefully more info coming on that as well. I did want to ask, if I could, Mr. Calella, we have some committees that only have two board members. We don't have a chair for food service. I'm really concerned that our new food service director's going to come in and not have a chair. I'm asking, maybe we could find a way to make, I mean, I doubt we're getting a new board member between now and December, so I think we need to fix it.
Somebody petition the courts.
I think people may be, but whatever.
Did anyone petition the courts? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter. It still could take months to do that. We need to, we need full committees, and we need-
I didn't hear what you said.
We need chairs.
I just want to remind you that the board can still fill that vacancy unless somebody files that petition.
And we don't know if anybody has filed a petition.
They're required to serve the district. As far as I know, the district has not received any copy of any such petition. I was hoping a new person would take some of these committees, Michelle.
I know.
Do you want to-
Well, here we are.
You want to try to revote? I mean, the last, the last time there was a vacancy on the committee, and I, I think that it was a Democratic person that resigned, and we put a Democratic person, Ms. White, on the committee, on the board. And I honestly believe that since a Republican resigned, we should have a Republican on the board. And, you know, I think we should go back and revisit that. And if, that's just the way I feel. I mean, we did it in past practice, and if you want to revisit it in August, we can do that, and they can be on the chairs of the committee.
Yeah, no, cheer him.
I did.
I have a feeling it's going to go four-four, so.
How many committees are we short people?
Two.
Which ones?
Which two?
Food service and transportation.
Did Joe have two committees? Was he chair of two committees?
No, just, just one.
And safe and supportive schools.
Now we have three. Well-
He had food service, right?
Facilities he sat on.
He was just on the-
It's over your shores.
But safe and supportive schools doesn't have their committee member, and it's the brand-new committee. We have a new food service director coming in without a chair.
I think we just need the chair right now.
I'd be happy to serve on the food services.
I think it's food, education.
I'm on the committee, I can be chair if-
I'm worried about the new person, and making sure that they have their solid direction. That's all.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
You know, with Kevin, that's good, because with personnel, you really don't have a report to do.
Yeah, good. That's good, Kevin. Kevin, if you can give us a report, it would be great.
Why don't we think about that, maybe before in August, August 4th?
It's the next meeting.
Yep. All right.
Get some volunteers.
Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGuff, board member?
We did not meet this month, but there were the first round of interviews for the finance director, for the new finance director, and there will be the final interview, I believe, coming up in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Of course, keep you posted on that.
President's report, Mr. Sal Calella. Mr. Calella will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. There's only approximately 40 days left of summer before school starts.
Wow.
I encourage students to keep up with their summer math packets, summer reading, and any AP assignments they have. Time is of the essence, and deadlines are everything. First day of school, 15-16, is Monday, August 31st, and please check your website periodically for any announcements and back-to-school events. And just one bit of information for new developments, I did contact the Borough concerning new housing plans. Autumn Ridge was tentatively approved. That's 78 lots off of New Texas Road. Colonial Point Phase 2, I think, is good in front of the Planning Commission, 39 lots. In Oakmont Heights, 78 carriage homes is proposed to. So those are the only developments that I was given from the district.
So I wanted to make a mention of something. I attended the Pivot Auction-
Oh, cool.
On July 11th, and I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Glasspool and Jason Isley, because they worked their butts off, and I witnessed it, and they really did. They really worked their butts off. They were, you know, it was a fair amount. I saw Jean there. You were there as well, helping. But there are some heavy items that, there was some muscle power by Dr. Glasspool and Jason Isley.
Hand out water.
I just want to say, I witnessed it, and it was much appreciated, and I'm sure, you know, the community would like to know that on their Saturday morning, that that's what they did.
Would we make about, would we make 30, 40,000, Jean?
That's about 30, 40,000.
I just want to know, where'd the flagpole go?
725 was the actual number.
Phil Miller took it. That's all I cared about.
Yeah, Phil Miller took the flag.
Well, at least it, citizens know they're getting their dollars' worth, you know, everything.
But I think you need to mention that Mr. Danny Russo was there as well.
He was our auctioneer.
Yeah, he was the auctioneer.
All gratis, all gratis.
I did buy items.
Yes.
I have pictures to follow.
I have a couple announcements. We do have a special voting meeting on Tuesday, August 4th. That meeting will be here at 6:00 PM, and then there will be a committee of the whole that follows immediately. The Act 34 hearing for New Regency Park is tentatively scheduled right now for August 25th. We will make sure we advertise 20 days in advance. The regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 25th, to follow the Act 34, should that fall on the same day, here in the high school auditorium.
I do have a question for the board. The Act 34 hearing is on a board meeting night. I'm concerned that there could be a long Act 34 hearing, from the comments that we had from tonight, and maybe future comments. Do you still want to have those concomitantly, or do you want the Act 34 hearing separate from the board meeting?
That's a good question.
I would prefer it separately. I would prefer it separately, so that we could give it all the attention it deserves.
Would you like to pick it now, because I'm afraid if we wait till the 4th, it may hem us in. So if you want to look at your calendars now, and let us know when to schedule that.
Whatever I'm going to be doing, I have a feeling I'll be on the phone, but that's near the head and right there. How many days do we have to have?
Twenty days.
Twenty days.
So, I would not go any earlier than the 25th, just as we've kind of had some conversations here this evening. Certainly, those folks would know. Remember, the 26th, that Wednesday is an in-service day, followed by in-service day, followed by clerical day, and then Monday's school. So, I don't know what that looks like for, you know, any citizens that would want to attend or not, but I would consider that. Monday, there's a self-guided tour, I believe, one of our self-guided tours, tour days and walk-through days at O'Block. Shouldn't really interfere. Certainly your call.
No, I'm with you, Rich. I think we should have it separately, because there may be a lot of comments.
Plus, plus, we still have a regular business to take care of.
How about Wednesday, the 26th?
Wednesday, the 26th?
I'm okay with that.
I'd rather do it on an in-service day before school starts, so that it doesn't affect students' parents.
I'm fine with that.
All okay on this end?
I will be on the phone that day.
Okay. Ms. Vento, we have all the information required to file that, and we still need to put that in the Pittsburgh Legal Journal?
No, no.
No, just to closing? Okay. So we'll go Act 34 on Wednesday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM. Here. The wrong date. I got you. All right, so we'll tentatively go for 6:00 PM, the Act 34 meeting. We'll have that here in the auditorium?
Yeah.
All right, just as a note, all that information, we're still going speakers, people who want to speak first, signups. Is that correct? All right, we'll get that information out. We'll post it on our website, as well as the requisite publications.
Can they send a letter in as well?
Yes, they can.
Can it be read or?
Yes. Okay, those would be all, be all of the announcements.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you so much for coming and sticking with us tonight.